Good?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna call this work session to order for November 4th. We have a guest here today, Mickey Shields from League of Iowa Cities. Mickey, welcome. And we're just gonna be talking about municipal roles and responsibilities.
We are. Well, first of all, thank you very much for having me. I want to thank you all for carving out time on a kind of mid-afternoon on a Monday, the day before Election Day. There's a lot going on, I'm sure, in your community and across the state. So again, thank you for having me and inviting me up for this discussion. The plan is to talk first about roles and responsibilities. It's kind of an overview of some of the things that we guide elected officials and staff on, just a kind of big-picture items for municipal government. And then the backside will be on council meetings themselves. And we'll dive into some of the kind of basics of the law, the state code, on open meetings, but also what effective meetings look like, what ineffective meetings look like, and some tips for making sure that yours are being done well. Throughout this, I think we got two hours, something like that, please, please, please ask questions. I understand that we're being simulcast, broadcast, whatever the terminology is, and recorded, so I know everyone will be probably in your best behavior. But at the same time, anyone who's joined me in classes I teach for different topics, it's much more fun and engaging if you're asking questions. So I will try to prompt you to ask questions, especially things that are particular to your form of government, the way Polk City does its services and does its business, but also your meetings, your council meetings, board meetings, and commission meetings and so forth. Because they can be a little bit different from city to city. There are some generalities I'll cover here throughout the session, but there's always a little thing, little things that are unique to each city that I work with, and that's cool, too. So again, if there's something that, as we go, that you want to ask about for clarification or something that's more unique to Polk City, certainly just raise your hand, or I don't know, whatever, the mayor, what your process is that you want to follow here, if people are, you're comfortable with people raising their hands and going to them, that's okay. So real quick, introduce myself. I am the League's Director of Membership. Actually, I'm now the Deputy Director. I got, just a couple of times I've done this now. I just got promoted into a new position at the League, our Deputy Director position. So kind of figuring out what I'm, what I'm doing, and that's not gonna change a whole lot. Previous to that, I was our Director of Membership Services. Been at the League of Cities since 2008. In Membership Services, our main job is education and training. So we do a lot of workshops, we have annual conferences. I know, I'm looking around, I know some familiar faces, I met some of you before, so you kind of know what, who I am and what we do. But that's really my main focus, is providing education and training through those workshops and events, but also with our Cityscape magazine, our special reports, our website. Then a lot of it is also just answering questions from our members, elected officials, staff, you name it, small towns, big cities, urban, rural, every part of the state, my day-to-day. In fact, on the way up here, I was taking a call from a city attorney and just, you know, helping out, provide them resources, provide them some guidance, sample documents, you name it. That's, that's really what we do on a day-to-day basis at the League. So all that being said, if there's ever any time that you have questions after this, please ask them. I'm always here to help you guys with anything that comes up. So before, again, any questions? Okay. We'll focus on roles and responsibilities. And again, this is big-picture kind of stuff. And before I get too far into it, just note that the League has a handbook called the Iowa Municipal Policy Leaders Handbook. Anyone familiar with that? Yet, maybe? Okay, some of you are. One, thank you, Jenny. That is something that's been around, gosh, I think, since the 90s. Really designed for newly-elected officials, or really elected officials in general. It's kind of the, just the handbook for everything you can think of, mainly for elected officials, just get a sense of the basics of municipal government. What is, what is this? What is that? What is your role? What is this role? Just how to do the city budget, how to run a good meeting, and on and on and on. So I think there's 15 chapters or something like that. It's meant to be kind of overview, but also educational and helpful. So as I go throughout this, if there's other time, you're kind of thinking, I need to like really dive into this particular area, ask questions, but also note that that handbook is out there. It's on our website, it's free to use, it's a PDF, you can search it, you can download it, whatever you want to do with it, it's free to our members. So it's in our, on our website, iowleague.org, we have a publications section that has a whole bunch of reports like that. So that's one of them, that's really one of the most important ones that we do. We put out every couple of years to tie them up with the city election cycle. So again, just note that that resource is out there, and it really gets into all of this stuff in much more detail. So Iowa, we have what is called Home Rules. Everyone familiar with Home Rule? This at least kind of in a very basic sense. It basically means that you, as a city government, have the powers to run your city as you see fit, to adopt codes and policies and adopt a budget and provide services in a way that you think is best for your town, with some limitations. Everything has to be done within the confines of this kind of premise that you cannot supersede or be in conflict with any state codes or federal codes. So it always starts at the federal level, then state, then local. And so you have a lot of flexibility, but there's always some preemptions, we call them, that say, okay, as a city government, you can't do this kind of code or this kind of policy because the state code already has it in place. You can't ever go less than a state code. You can be more stringent, but you can't be less stringent. And so it's really important to understand that really basic fundamental aspect to your powers as a city government, in terms of what you can and cannot do. There's a lot of flexibility, a lot of innovation, but it's always kind of within that box, so to speak, of what's allowed by, in the state code. Within that is the forms of government. There are six allowed forms of government in Iowa. Nearly every city in Iowa, 97%, have what is called the mayor-council form of government, where you have a mayor and council, and that's the basic structure. And then from there, you can have as many or as few staff as you like. The only, we'll talk about this later, the only position that state code actually speaks to, you must have, is a city clerk. Every city must have a city clerk. But even then, you see a lot of differences. Are really small towns, they have a city clerk, but that, that position in the city itself may, the city hall may only be open two hours on Tuesday and four hours on a Thursday, something like that, some of these really, really small towns. So you still have flexibility because of Home Rule, that you can kind of shape things and operate things the way you think is best. So I, I know you guys have that form of government, and so one of the things that you'll see, as we, again, as we get on later on, is some cities, about 200, have a city administrator or manager position like you all have with Chelsea. And, and so that's a, an element of Home Rule. The other 700 or so cities, 939 cities in Iowa, the other ones do not have that position. Why? Because they don't need it, they can't afford one, especially the smaller ones, they don't need an around-the-clock city manager. But once you get to a certain size, typically about 1,500 in population, you start to see the need for a professional manager to really manage the city on behalf of the council. So we'll get to that later. But again, that's how most cities are structured, with some local differences. There are 12 cities in Iowa, if memory serves, that have the mayor-council form of government, but they have an even number of council seats, and that creates a really interesting dynamic for their council meetings. But the vast majority have five council seats, or an odd number of council seats, some have seven, some have nine. But the most of, most cities in Iowa are like you all, five council seats and a mayor. And that's kind of the, just the basic structure for the government of the city. So getting into the next really key areas here is the mayor and council, and what their kind of powers and duties and roles and responsibilities are. For the mayor, some of these are gonna be coming straight from the state code, okay? And so that's, again, we gotta follow state code, right? So if the state code says this, that's it, right? We gotta follow that. So the first thing is, the mayor is the presiding officer of the council. Sounds simple enough, but it can get really important. And we talked in the next part about council meeting basics and kind of the roles and responsibilities of that. The mayor is the presiding officer. And so their job is really kind of lead the meetings, manage the meetings, enforce the rules. It's like most mayors, when they run for office, they don't realize that, that's part of the job, and it's usually not the funnest part of the job, is having to use that gavel and rein people in, whether that's the public or a member of the council or the city staff. But that's how it's supposed to work. There are some administrative powers assigned to the mayor by the state code of Iowa. This is one of those key differences for the cities that do not have a city administrator or city manager. The mayor is the chief administrative officer of the city, and they actually oversee staff and the departments. Another thing that most mayors out there probably don't realize when they run for office and win, like, oh, by the way, you're also now the boss of the staff, and you have to sign the time-off requests and time sheets and all that good stuff. You know, there's very few, what I, what we would call strong mayors left. I think we're down to two cities in Iowa have like a full-time mayor, maybe three cities if memory serves. And so for those cities, the mayor is actually in city hall every day, but for everybody else, these are all volunteer positions, as you all well know, and you don't probably have time to be a boss of the city. And so that's where you start to see cities employ city administrators and city managers, and of course, the city clerks and others, to carry out those duties, day-to-day duties because you all are elected, and again, you're volunteers, and your bottom paper meeting is probably not anywhere near minimum wage, or anything like that, which is understandable. So, but that's just kind of part of how it all works in city government in Iowa. There are some ones that are important, though. So even for those cities that have a city administrator like you all, so you're not gonna be the chief administrative officer, you're gonna turn those duties over to the city manager or city administrator position. The mayor is still, though, really the only person to city government level that has emergency powers. And really, that comes down to declaring an emergency when your city is facing some kind of public health or public disaster, tornado, flooding, of course, there's a lot of that in Iowa. And so the mayor at time, those times, would have to issue a, an emergency order, saying we are suffering some kind of disaster, I have to exercise this power. In a large part, you're gonna do that to activate the disaster response mechanism with your county emergency management. And so that's typically, the county emergency management coordinator will go to the mayor and to the council and say, I need emergency order declared, so we can start activating this response plan. But still, it does take the mayor to be involved in that, and the mayor also serves on the County Emergency Management Commission. That all, that is in state code, that's, that's part of the role of the mayor. The mayor can designate somebody else to serve in that capacity, but oftentimes, the mayor is a person that's gonna serve on those commissions and represent the city at the countywide level for emergency management. This is where, another area where it starts to get into, kind of depends on each city and how they set this up with appointments. And appointments, for the first part, I'm looking at, would be boards and commissions. So your library board, your park board, P&amp;Z, Board of Adjustment, all those, what most cities have set up is, the mayor makes the appointment, but it's what? Subject to council approval. So is that the case here? I'm guessing it is, right? Very common. And so the mayor has a role in that, you have to need the mayor to make that appointment, but the second kind of check and balance part of this is, the council has to approve it. And so the both parties, so to speak, have a role to play on all of those boards and commissions and those kinds of appointments. And then typically, for your department head, city manager, same type of deal. Again, kind of some differences out there from city to city on, on what that takes, but typically, the mayor is directly involved in making the official appointment, but then it has to go to council for approval. Same would be true for removing appointees from office, boards and commissions, and then like your key positions at the city. So that's probably, I'm guessing that's generally how that works here, is, yep. So it's kind of a two-step process, checks and balances, but it's important for the mayor to be involved in those. So most mayors at this point, because I'll say, the next thing I'll say is, the mayor and this form of government cannot vote, okay? They cannot vote. This is another one where mayors kind of say, wait a minute, I thought I was gonna have a, the ability to say things and vote on things, exercise some elected official powers. Like, well, it's limited, because you cannot vote, you cannot break a tie. But you do have the power to veto resolutions and ordinances. So the mayor does have a legislative power through the veto mechanism with resolutions and ordinances. They cannot veto motions. Motions go into effect immediately. Everybody got that? That's always a tricky one in the state code. I don't know why it was written that way, but that's what we have. The mayor has, if they ever do want to issue a veto, they have 14 days after passage to do that with resolutions and ordinances, and then this council has 30 days after that to override it by at least a two-thirds vote. Everybody understand that, how that process works? Veto's are rare in most cities, but every now and then I'll catch some questions on that. It's fairly straightforward. The mayor does have to explain his or her reasons for the veto in writing. I was asked once, can I just scribble down on a napkin or a notepad that says I vetoed this because I think it's bad? I guess so. The state code doesn't really get specific, it just says it has to be done in writing. Okay. I would encourage mayors to have a little more thought to it and explain, at least for the public's sake and the council's sake, on why they're vetoing this, that, or the other thing. But in theory, they could just say, because I don't like it? Okay, fine, it's in effect.
Is that typically how it happens after the fact? Like if, like, is I, I don't know, around here, I've never heard of one
Yeah.
happening. So is it, like, a motion gets approved at the meeting, and then they wait till the next meeting to like announce a veto, or?
Yeah, it depends on each city. I would say in a city this size, there would probably be more of a formal process where you'd want to announce it, just because there's, it's just, it's hard to get the message out otherwise. And so the, the state code simply says the mayor has to issue the veto in writing to the council. So typically, what happens is they submit it to the city administrators or, and/or city clerk, then they disseminate that to the council, and the city posts some kind of notice that resolution number blank was vetoed by the mayor, and here's the mayor's written explanation. And then the council has 30 days after that's been submitted to put it on a future meeting agenda to override it. And that vote, if they do so, would, that vote would take a two-thirds or a greater majority. So it's, you got the 14-day window, so the mayor, you know, they can kind of sit on it, you know, and I say that to mayors often, if they're really against something, just take at least a night, calm down, get the emotions out of it, and then submit a thoughtful explanation to do, to explain your veto. But do some, do all mayors do that? No. Sometimes it's in the heat of the moment, and they just scribble out some note, and I'm like, okay, well, that technically satisfies the law, it's probably not the best thing, but it's your town, so. But if it ever does come up, you know, the state code has a very basic process, but you do gotta follow it. You do have to follow that to make sure it's done right, and then, again, the council has a chance to override it if they so choose. The mayor also has a number of informal duties and responsibilities. We typically look at mayors as sort of the dignitary or the chief cheerleader of the city, if you will. Oftentimes, the mayor is out doing ribbon cuttings and kind of doing a lot of meeting gre, a lot of like council members do as well. But the mayor is kind of looked to as the spokesperson for the city, kind of depends on the city, and the mayor, him or herself. Some mayors are more comfortable doing those things than others, but that's typically the other side to it, is they're sort of in here signing checks and stuff, and some of the basics like that, signing resolutions, signing ordinances, but also kind of get invited to different events, and civic clubs in town, and groups like that to give a speech or a welcome from the city, and those types of deals. So sort of the, the public face of the council and of the city itself. Any questions on that? Okay. Now, for the council, this is what we would call like the legislative branch of city government. This is really where most of the power resides politically at the city level, and that's because they vote. This is the voting body, and so anything, everything that you want done at the city level has to get approval from your city council, ultimately. And so that's where the voting happens, and you have to have, this is the old rule, on a five-member council, what do you need to get anything done? You need three, right? Right? So this is one of those things, for newer council members, we stress to them that you could have literally the best idea in the world. It's something that would be the greatest thing in the world for your city, you're convinced of it, you know it's true, you've got data, you've got research, and so on and so forth. But if you don't have two friends that agree with you on the council, it's not going anywhere. It's just not. And so this is the politics side of being a council member, understanding that you are just one of five, and without two others that agree with you, it's just not gonna happen, whatever it is. And so it's, it's something I think that we all kind of understand, growing up and living in, working in a democracy, but at the same time, there's a lot of struggles with that. Council members, again, that they really feel like they're super passionate about XYZ, whatever it is, some projects, some program, some development, whatever the case may be, but if you don't get at least two others on your council to come along with you, it's just not going anywhere. And so it's, it's a hard thing sometimes, especially for newer council members, to realize that there is a political element to all of this, that yes, you got elected, and you, you know, come into office, sometimes I hear this, where I, you know, I've got elected by these people based on this platform, and I've got a mandate of some sort, and I totally respect that. But again, if you don't get to a majority threshold, you know, it's just not gonna go anywhere. And so you gotta work on that. You gotta, you gotta play politics, you gotta negotiate, you gotta compromise, you've gotta work and communicate with your team here. And so that's one of the things, as we kind of get down this list a little bit, especially, some of you have gone to Municipal Leadership Academy with us, MLA. That's the training series that we do after the city elections, especially for newer council members. But like one of those early classes, we always stress, because a lot of these folks are brand-new, they don't maybe have ever worked in government or served on a board or a commission or anything like that, and it's like, again, everything takes a majority, and you've gotta have three or more votes on a five-member council to do anything, and here's the other side to that. You have no individual power, zero. That's a hard thing to accept for some folks, because hey, you're out on the campaign trail, I want to do this, I want to do that, I've got a lot of people voting for me and supporting me, but you individually, you have no power. You can't go out and spend one cent of city money without the council authorizing that, right? You can't make any commitments or promises without the council also doing the same and supporting that as a majority. And so that is, that's a very difficult thing for some people to realize, but it's also, you gotta really, you gotta understand it, you just have to. You gotta accept it, and then you gotta go to work. You gotta go to work on, if you've got some pet project, or I shouldn't say pet project, but a passionate priority of yours that you really want to see the city do or accomplish, go to work on it, start communicating, start negotiating with your fellow council members, work with the staff, come up with good options, whatever the thing is, you know? So all the while, the other thing the council is constantly doing is providing oversight. And this is the other big, big responsibility for all the elected officials, but especially the council, because everything that you do has a consequence, good or bad. And so it's up to you then to provide oversight of everything. The budget, of course, how did things shape up, how are they looking? But programs and services and projects and everything else that your city is doing. Because if there's anything that does go wrong, guess who gets to answer for it? It's you all. If you ever... I don't mean to scare you all from serving here publicly. We need good public servants like you all, including the staff. But it's a big responsibility. It really is. I mean, this is one of the catches to working and serving in city government or any, any level of government. It's, it's a public transparent service. If something goes wrongly and, you know, whether it's a budgetary issue or a program, a service-type thing, it's all out there for to see, anyone to see, right? That's part of the pressure that comes with this arena, that any little mistake, any big mistake, anyone can come and find it and see it, and the media can run stories about it. And that's, we welcome that, we want transparency, we welcome that kind of scrutiny, but it does add some stress, and it does add a little bit more work to making sure that everything's being done correctly. And that's one of the things I usually say, especially MLA, like the newer folks, that government moves really slowly, right? I think we all know that. And that's, that is by design. It's frustrating, it's all get out, I've been there. You know, you get all excited about a project, and then you gotta go through all the public hearings, and there's like a really slow process to it, and developers in particular get really bent out of shape about that, and it's like, well, it's meant to go slowly. Why? Because you have the tax dollars and taxpayers' interest at heart. If you go too fast through something, make a bad choice, waste some tax dollars, be inefficient, whatever the case may be, you just wasted tax dollars. You just wasted public resources, and you need to go slow on purpose to really make sure you're doing something that's good and necessary. So that's part of why everything can move slowly, and it doesn't make you feel any better, I'm sure, as long as it can take to get something done, but that's by design. It's really to protect you all. So that's, again, a lot of oversight, it's, it's mundane, I think probably more than most people realize, a lot of city government is boring, and it's, that's just providing daily services, it's not very exciting, but it's also very, very crucial and essential that you do it, and you do it well. So a couple other notes here that I have that I want to share with you is, one thing that we, is again, another MLA point that I really want to expand on, and that is that once decisions are made, that you get, it's time to move on. And so any number of votes and policy issues and ideas and the city budget, you're gonna have some different viewpoints, right? You all on the council here come from different perspectives, different backgrounds, you have different priorities, and other things you don't really care about, let's be honest, right? But your fellow council member might be really into this or that, but you're just not, and that's fine. That's how it is, and in fact, that's a healthy city council. You don't want five robots that all think the same way, and a mayor. You want some different viewpoints to reflect your community. But that does lead sometimes to tension and different differences on what's most important, and you're gonna have some votes, they're split. You're gonna have some 3-2 votes, you're gonna have some failed votes. That's just, that's part and parcel, right? Probably a lot of 5-0 votes, I'm guessing, that's pretty common. A lot of that routine stuff is just 5-0, 5-0, 5-0, but every now and then, you're gonna run into a 3-2, a 2-3, something like that situation. And that's, sometimes it's tough for councils to deal with. They got Iowa nice, nobody wants to say no, but part of city government, as I'm sure you know by now, is saying no to people. You can't say yes to everybody. That's a lesson I learned many years ago, starting out in city government. City manager, one of his training points was, we gotta do the best for the most, right? But it doesn't mean everyone's gonna be happy. It's impossible to make all of your residents happy, it just is. All of your business owners, you know, owners in town and everyone else that you serve, you just, you're gonna have a few folks that you just have to say no to. It just has, that's part of the deal. That's the fun part of being an elected official, right? You get to have to say no to somebody, but it is part of the deal. But the key here to be on the same page and keep things moving is that once a decision is made, you gotta move on. To keep on bringing up past decisions, we see this happen, and it really leads to dysfunction and inefficiency. I mean, in some ways, it's a vote, sometimes I'll see a council member or a mayor keep on bringing back a previously voted-upon item onto the agenda. And it's like, what's the purpose, other than making a statement over and over and over again? And it keeps on failing, it keeps on failing, it keeps on failing, and it's like, you're just frankly wasting a lot of people's time by doing so. And it looks to the public like what? Like, we're not on the same page as a, as a council, and that's not a good place to be. So once a decision is made, once the majority has spoken, you gotta move on. It doesn't mean you have to support it, doesn't mean you have to, if you're on the opposite side of whatever, you know, issue won or lost, and you're on the opposite side, it doesn't mean you have to be happy with it, but you do have to be supportive of the city overall, okay? I think that's the main thing to look at, is in your own individual behavior and conduct, am I being, still being supportive of the city? Am I still being a positive influence in my community, even if I didn't get my way on this or that vote? Now, the other thing, too, is remember, this is politics, right? And so politics 101, you don't ever, you don't always know when you're gonna need somebody else's vote on some other issue down the road, right? And so just because you lost on something that was near and dear to you, it might come back again, or some other version of it might come back again, but they might need your vote on something coming down the road, right? That's near and dear to them. So this is politics 101. You've gotta always be open-minded enough to know that we might have to have some vote trading, frankly, this is politics, right? So something that one of the council members brings up, I don't really care about it, but, you know, I might need their vote next time around, my thing comes back on the table? Okay, let's talk, let's compromise, let's figure out some common ground here. I know compromise is a dirty word these days in DC and federal politics, but at the local level, we get to still compromise. And so think about that. Anytime maybe you're feeling kind of bent out of shape, or I didn't get my way, or they're not listening to me, and why can't I get my agenda item on there? Like, all I get is a stiff arm from the rest of my council members, just, you know, it's not to say, I'm not saying don't be frustrated and don't express yourself, but also understand that like, some point, you might be able to use your political skills to get that thing done by compromising and negotiating and working with your fellow council members. So this is one I stress a lot, because that is gotta be in the top five of the issues I see with councils that struggle with interpersonal dynamics and just kind of staying on the same page. It's because there's some hard feelings about a vote lost or a vote won and and the politics that go into that. Any questions there? Okay, politics is fun, right? Uh so next we have staff. And this is where you start to see huge amount of difference amongst cities in Iowa on just. The staffing that they utilize to get the job done. Mainly because there's a lot of differences out there on the services that we provide. There are a number of cities, smaller towns that don't have a police department at all. Um and so obviously those cities, they're not gonna have a police chief and police officers and so on. They're gonna contract out typically with the county sheriff's department. Uh there's other examples of that with libraries and fire departments and parks and rec and you name it. Uh just like, does this city even do this? And then if they do do it, like what's what are the levels? There's all kinds of different levels. So you guys are in what I would call sort of the. Um uh tough middle. Uh of cities where you're big enough to have a city administrator and a lot of service demands. From the public, you're a growing community, which is good on one hand, but you know. Growing pains are a real thing in in local government. I'm sure you're experiencing that. Uh but you're also not to the size where you can probably staff up and provide more support. Uh to Chelsea and the team here. And so you're kind of having the. Uh I'm looking at the staff. You probably know what I'm talking about, where it's like we're having to wear multiple hats every single day. And we can't just kick it to um like a younger staff member or an intern even. You're just having to do it. And and so that's where the the group of cities, I would say between like three and maybe. Twenty thousand in population, fifteen thousand in population, they they probably have it the hardest in terms of city management. Because of just limitations on how much staff you can really throw at a project or a program or a service. Um and so it is what it is. I don't have any great solutions to that other than. Understand that the staff is invaluable uh for every city out there. Uh I could also just a quick sidebar to this in that we have never seen so much turnaround at the league statewide. In both elected offices and as well as staff. Um it's just a tough time to be in local government right now. For all sorts of reasons. And it's always been the case that we can't really probably pay what the private sector pays. And so that's always been a bit of a a paying point for local government. Um but it's it's just a tough time to retain good staff and attract new ones when you have open positions. Uh and so just a little sidebar, like try to support your staff as best as you possibly can, whatever that means to you. Uh and rely on them, trust them. Uh this is what they do. These are the working professionals. They have experience within their respective fields. Uh they've done this. Your staff, uh along with the elected officials knows your community inside and out. They know every nook and cranny. They know what roads need to be addressed and maintained, what potholes are out there. Where we're short on services, where we could use some help with this or that. Uh even things that you can get rid of, right? Or or reduce or eliminate um with programs and services and so forth. Uh so they need to be part of your structure, your chain of command and whatever that looks like for each city out there. Um so I said before that uh the kind of big line in the sand is the two hundred cities that have a city administrator or manager like you all do. And so for those cities, the reason you have that position is to provide professional management across the staff. And so the mayor and the council doesn't have to give daily direction. That's really what you're after. And so you have that position, you have Chelsea and um. The main idea there is that you flow your directives, your needs, your issues through that office. And then Chelsea disseminates that out accordingly. It's a different from city to city. Chelsea knows this stuff from being around the city manager community. Um some city managers and administrators have more powers than others, kind of depends on their city code and and just how much. That position's been tasked with and and been and made responsible for. Uh but generally speaking, that's the whole idea, is that you all as a council, you're looking big picture. Right? Big priorities, what's going on across the community, you express those. Um have you guys done strategic planning or goal setting any recently? So that's that's your job, right? You're setting the table. You're looking at the big picture, the big ticket items. Then you go to Chelsea and say, go get it done, right? And then Chelsea and team starts to really put a fine point to it. You start to see like the action steps and those things that go into the plan, the real specifics on how we're gonna achieve. These goals that the council has set. And so that's really your job is to look at those the big picture, probably not really getting down into the routine. Daily, like what shovel are you buying? I might I've literally heard that question being asked. At a council meeting, I'm kind of going, it's probably not the best use of your time. Uh allow the professionals to make a choice on what they they need, give them a budget, a respectable budget. And then they can go figure out what the best shovel is for that project, right? Um and so that's the, you know, just a kind of a silly example though, but that's a good reminder of. Allow the professionals to make those kinds of decisions. And of course, you provide oversight, right? Going back to that, that's if there's something wrong. You could you talk to Chelsea, right? If you see something on the street. Um this is another classic example we hear where, you know, council member or or mayor might go. A bit past what they should be doing. And they see um a road crew out there from the city doing some kind of, you know, pothole work. They don't like what they see. They pull over and they go tell them to stop doing that and do something different. Is that how you think it should be done? I would say no. Most would say no. You send a text message or an email or call Chelsea up and say, hey, I got, you know, I saw somebody. From the city, you know, road crew, didn't really look like they were uh doing their job. Why don't you look into that? Okay. That's all. You want to funnel it through that position and it funnels back to you. So then Chelsea and team can kind of come up with uh reports and ideas and options. And they present to you as a council some different ideas on whatever case may be. And then you guys adopt them, right? So it's kind of a two way street funneling through the city manager's office. Everybody got that? Generally speaking? Somebody add anything to that?
No.
So it's all on you.
Thanks.
Right, yeah, right, yeah, you're welcome. But that is the best way to go about it. And I don't ever want to, that doesn't, sometimes council members, I I'll say something like that and they'll say. Well, our city manager has too much power. And it's like, but you still provide oversight, right? They work for you. All the staff members here work at your uh pleasure. That's why I always say you work at the pleasure of the council. Um you again, you you should solicit and accept their guidance. Um their ideas, their proposals for all the different things the city is doing or isn't doing yet. But it's ultimately your decision to make as a group on anything. So they could come to you and say, we really need a new park. In this new part of town and you could say as a council, we're not ready yet for that. Maybe five years. We'll put in our five year plan. Okay, that's your decision to make, right? And you can always come back and change it too. So but the the biggest point I want you to take away is that, I mean, these folks, they've been trained to do this. They work every day doing this stuff. No one knows their respective jobs better than them. Not a single person out there. So respect that, understand that. Doesn't mean they're perfect. They're gonna make mistakes. Um sorry, folks, but you are. Um and you know, you gotta hold them to that. But work with Chelsea and and that's that's how it really should flow. Uh so tied to that is the organizational structure. And again, it's gonna be depending on you city out there. On how that works for them and looks for them. But you need to have a clear chain of command. And so I don't know if you guys have like a actual org chart.
We do.
You do?
Yep.
And who's at the top of your org chart? This is always a good quill, fun quiz for me. Anyone want to answer that? Look at the elected officials in particular. Who do you think's at the top of your city's organizational chart? Well, I always start with the citizens because they elect you all, right? And you represent them. And so when I talk about all those big picture items and goal setting and strategic planning, of course, the annual budget. When you're doing that stuff, you're representing your citizens. And so they're always at the top. Uh even though they might be distant at times in terms of like, well, does the citizen want this or do they want that or? Whatever, but that's always, that's why you all represent them. It's why it's so important for that you all as council members. To know what's going on in your community and and hear your residents and solicit their. Feedback and their ideas as best you can. I know it's not always easy in every city out there, but that's part of your job. As elected officials is know what's going on in your town. And then you come to the council meeting and you work it out uh with your fellow council members. So it always start with them, then the council, then the staff, right? So that's where you start to see those differences from city to city. City administrator would be right below the council on some kind of organizational chart, however you want to flow it out. Um and then you have department heads and then of course you have your the rest of your staff and and your various departments. And so that's the general chain of command, uh fairly easy to follow. But along with that, especially these days, because there's been way more or much uh more sort of. What we call like cross departmental staff and and employees who work in multiple departments, doing multiple services. And so that's you're seeing that pretty much every city out there out of sheer need and necessity. As budget constraints have hit a lot of cities. And so sometimes the service to service delivery part of this can get a little bit messy. You really need some S O Ps to help everyone understand. Well, that department does that and this person does this. And if there's issues, you call this department head and and those types of things. So hopefully that's clearly understood. Um every, not every city has that. And so as you, sometimes I talk to a city, it's like, okay, we really gotta start at the basics and develop an org chart. And a chain of command and, you know, who do you call when there's a water main break and those types of things? Um uh so I feel like you guys are in a good place there, but just be thinking about that. Every place has policies, you know, nowadays, especially you've gotta have strong employment policies, employee handbook. Um I know you guys do. Uh but as a council, when you're thinking about, well, I don't like the way this or that works. Go into your policies, okay? If you feel like staff need to have some different ways of doing business. Usually it's supported in some way by an S O P and or an employment policy. That's where to start. You gotta start with the structure first. And so that's where you go to Chelsea and say, I don't really like this. And she can go look into the policies or work with the city attorney, work with staff and figure out. Some options on, okay, we can make some changes here. Um whatever the case may be. Um the other one I always find a little interesting for me, uh just working with cities across the state is the citizen complaint process. I really should say citizen comment process, but. Let's be honest, if you get a hundred comments from citizens, how many of those are complaints? Ninety nine, probably. Uh it's just part of the deal when you're working in the public sector and serving the public sector and. When you're doing really well, most people don't tell you that. They only speak to you when they've got a problem with something. Uh again, this is part of the deal. We accept that. Uh and so what is your pro- I mean, what is your process here? If somebody wants to file a complaint against the city of Polk City, what do they do?
We have an online process.
Online, okay. So the forum comes in of some sort and it goes to you or?
We have it. It depends on what it is, if it's police related or building related and it goes to the appropriate people.
Good, good. So that's a good process to have. Everyone understands that. For the elected officials in the room, I hope you all heard that and understand that because that's another one that I see a lot of council members struggle with. And it comes from a really good place. They want to serve. And they want their residents and their voters to know that they care and that they're active and they're listening. And so if they get a complaint, what does some of them do? They say, I'm gonna go fix that for you. And they don't even maybe realize, well, that's actually not a city issue. Or that's not something the city can do. Because we don't have the money. We don't have the funding. We don't have the staff for this or that. And so. It kind of falls into one of the things before about you really cannot represent a city. Individually, even if someone comes to you and complains and says, what about this? What about that? And you agree, that is a problem. You cannot go then and say, oh, yeah, we'll take care of that next week. Right? That's the big no no for council members is be mindful that there is a process to this. And that you need to respect that. You can certainly check in and say to that resident, say, yes, I will definitely. Let the staff know. I will check into that. I will follow up with you next week and give you a progress update, right? That's the appropriate response. But try your best to avoid any kind of commitments on behalf of the city, because you really don't have that power. Um unless it's something you're very sure that yes, the city will do this. Pick up your garbage on Tuesday or something or other. I don't know. Um otherwise, just say, yep, I got your got your comment, got your question. I'll look into it. I'll respond back when I learn more. Everybody understand that? Is that how it usually works for you guys? There's probably no complaints in this fair town, right? Um the other one too, that this is one that um I've had to add in at times. Because of the times of our society and mainly the social media side of this, but media relations in general. Um it's gotten to be a really tricky part of serving in local government. Um these days, everyone has social media. Everyone now, not everyone, but most residents now, if they're looking for news related to your city, where are they going? Yeah, Facebook, um. Facebook. I was gonna say maybe Twitter or some of the others, but probably Facebook first. Um and most cities have put out socially, you know, they have the social media page for the city of. And they use it to put out information, just kind of basic stuff. Uh same with Twitter or or X, whatever it's called. And stuff like that. And that's totally fine. I and I I see the need for it. I think most of us have experienced social media, the the negative side of social media, both in our personal lives and our professional lives and our city lives. Um and so there is a downside to it clearly and I. Uh this this issue in particular is one that. A lot of cities are struggling with across the state, both as a city. Like the city of page, it's owned and operated by the city government. But also when a city official, whether they be elected or appointed. Start talking about city related issues on their own personal page. So there's there's issues that come from both of those um examples. On the city side of things, the biggest concern is really related to working with the public. And what happens if somebody makes comments on our page or critical comments on our page? And and so on and so forth. And so there is some legal guidance that I can share with you, but stop me if there's questions because stuff stuff does get pretty complex. Um and the first issue that really comes up is first amendment. Because as a governmental entity, when you create a public forum, you might. Not always, but might be often creating a public forum that has the uh first amendment protections. And so you gotta be careful with that. Definitely talk to your city attorney about this. But you do have some ability to restrict. Or regulate, I should say, uh speech, so to speak, on your first or on your social media pages with very limited ways. Mainly in the sense that the first amendment does not protect for inflammatory speech uh when someone's trying to incite violence. Uh public safety type of issues, name calling, defamatory comments, those types of things. So that that's not protected speech regardless of the forum. And so you can, as a city government, adopt policies and say that we will remove comments that violate these policies that do those kinds of things, you know, make profane comments. Uh incite violence and so on. And so you you always have that ability. Um I know it's awkward for cities to do that because you normally don't want to ever, you know, you accept all the good and the bad and the ugly when people are. Giving you their comments and their thoughts and their wisdom. But that is one area where I've seen it get really out of hand. And some of the zaniest things are these days are coming from the social media side of being a public servant. Um and since we're being recorded, I probably won't share too many of these stories. I don't want to give anyone the ideas out there. But there's some weird stuff happening. Uh and it makes it hard for city officials to manage that because you had to have this social media presence because people, again, people go there. Expecting the city to make announcements and put out information. But every now and then it can stir up a hornet's nest. And it's kind of hard to manage that because like, again, your staff has plenty of other things they need to be doing. Not managing social media all day long. But it can it can get like that. Um so the biggest thing I can tell you is have a good policy that allows you to manage the content. I'm not saying. You have to restrict comments or or take up the commenting off of Facebook. Uh if you don't want to. But I would have a policy that says we can restrict or remove uh comments if they violate these policies. The other one's even harder though. And that's where you have a city official that makes um some kind of social media posts or comments regarding the city. But they're doing it on their own personal um accounts, right? And so then this has become very common across our um city official network out there across the state. And I don't have great guidance in the sense that you can't restrict what people do in their free time, right? You're all private citizens. When you take off your council hat, you're outside of this room. Same with the staff, right? When they're off the clock, they're private citizens. They have the freedom to do whatever, as long as they're not breaking the law. And so you, that's no different for council. Um and so it's really tricky from a legal perspective or like kind of a management perspective to say to a. Anyone in this room or anyone on the staff. Like, well, don't make bad comments about the city. Well, I don't know if you can really do that. Uh but I think it's important for everyone to understand that you are representing the city, even when you think you're off the clock. This is probably more true for elected officials especially. Um the old rule was more about when you saw somebody at the grocery store, right? You're just out shopping for groceries on your, you know, Saturday or Sunday or something. That citizen doesn't care. They want to talk to you about city issues, right? And suddenly your council member hat is on, your elected official hat is on, whether you like it or not. Well, a lot of those conversations now are taking place online. And so especially when you have a council member that kind of. Um invites it by being very active on social media. Again, I'm not saying that inherently is wrong. But you gotta be mindful that that could create an environment. Where you are expected in kind of engaging with the the public. And so whenever you're doing that, the biggest thing I can tell you is that you cannot represent the city without the council's approval. This includes the staff. That you have to be always mindful that this is my opinion only, right? And so some way, some shape or form, you know, I know on um like Twitter or X, the people have on their like. Profile say something like my views are on my own or whatever it says, something like that. So try, if you're if you're active on social media and you want to talk about city issues. Do your best to make that make it very clear that this is just my own page, you know, that I'm not representing the city. Not representing the council. These are my thoughts, my opinions only. The other thing I would implore, this is not something I can tell your city to regulate. But try to be mindful, again, like think of that grocery store example, that you're still on the clock. In the citizen's eyes, even if you're not technically at a council meeting and representing the city at that point in time. But they don't see it that way. Once they engage with you, they only see you as a council member. And so if you get into a, I was gonna say a shouting. And so if you get into a, I was gonna say a shouting match, it's not really a shouting match online. But if you get into some kind of hot give and take with the resident via social media, again, you, you, in your mind, you're like, well, this is just on my own time. I can say what I want. True, but that public is gonna think of you as a council member. And if you're not representing the city and yourself professionally, that can hurt you and hurt the city. Um, and so that's part of social media, why it's so difficult these days is that, I don't know if you've experienced this, but I've heard from plenty of other city officials where they've got the town person or a group of people who are just sort of looking for any little thing to pick at. You know, sometimes it's real, sometimes it's kind of made up and they're off, they go, right? And you get into sort of that keyboard war of words and it's, and no one really wins, let's be honest. Um, you can say all the right things, give them all the best information and it just doesn't matter. They're just looking for a fight, okay? So I, I, again, I don't have any strong ways of regulating this. I don't wanna encourage that, but I just, it's more about playing to your professionalism and that you need to be a positive representation of the, of the council, of the city, whenever you're engaging the public, really. Any questions on that?
I think.
Usually there's a lot of questions on this topic.
I think one thing that we really um, run into here, and I don't think it's uncommon is, you know, um, like the, the spread of misinformation and it's usually uh, city misinformation. Um, and it typically happens on pages that we do not control. And it's how do you redirect, you know, the public to come to the city's Facebook page for the information? Or redirect to the city's website for the information?
That's a great, this is, this is the real test right now. And I don't know if we've gotten to a place where I've got like, this city does this. But there, we're getting there. And so what I would say, the ones I'm seeing being successful is two things. First, they have a really good city website and a really good city's social media page that is reliable and timely and accurate. Like you have to be the best and strongest and most accurate voice in your community on anything related to your city. Obviously you can't control what happens at the schools and the county and other, you know, kind of civic groups in town, even though everyone kind of thinks of that as city stuff. And they kind of come to the council saying, deal with this. And like, that's a school issue. I'm not about to get into that. Um, it still comes your way sometimes. But the big, the best, best thing I can tell you from just kind of like an internal perspective is you've gotta be really good about being accurate and timely. Uh, whatever platforms you use. Um, so if you, if and when you do redirect people, that they're going to a very reliable source. Cause if they then get sent to the city's social media page and there's stuff from like 2022 up there as the last post, and I don't know how, I'm, I haven't been on Facebook in years. But like, that's not gonna be a very like encouraging system then. So that's the first point of thing I would say is if you're in that arena, you better be really good at it. And so that's one thing I've seen cities do is they hire communications uh, people to really lock in on all the social media and all the media period. Communications period, but social media is a huge part of that, of course. And so you do have ability to have somebody just really focused in on that. I'm not sure if you guys are at that point as a city government, but be thinking about a, a role in that capacity that gives somebody the time and the, and the resource to really just focus in on city information and communications and, and media management. Um, but not every city can do that. And so that's part of it where typically in those cities that are not able to hire or even get like a half-time um, or a consultant to do social media work with them, that it call, falls to the city manager and the city clerk, maybe somebody else. And like, like you have enough time to do that. Uh, and so that's, find a way to carve that out. Because that's the other piece to this is like, you have to be on it like this. Because in social media land, an hour is a day. You know, it, it's like if you take an hour to respond to somebody, that's just like, oh, it's just inviting a thousand more comments to come in, like, oh, they're not even responding. It's like, it's been an hour. But that's, that's how it works in some of these, in some of these folks. And so the, the big thing though, what I tell is like, the city has to be the best source of information. And every time you see that stuff pop up, you just put out as a city government on your platforms. I wouldn't engage on those other pages. I just let that be. I let them kind of fall on themselves frankly. Because let's be honest, a lot of these pages, the ones that I see um, that are like problematic, they kind of will say like, we are the Polk City Community Page or something like that. Or it's usually like they use the city on purpose to kind of make it look like they're official, even though it's really just kind of a group of folks in town. It's usually a small group of folks in town. Um, and um, you know, I think a lot of times people realize this is just them. And let them be what they are, but you be the reliable source, making sure that your page or your platform is clean, it's up to date. So anytime there, and then the one thing that I do say like in response, if there is something that's really really just misinformative out there, uh, and I've heard some crazy stuff, um, just correct the record. Say, we're aware that there's a rumor or a, a, uh, information floating around the community that says this, this and this, that's false. Here's the facts, right? And say, this is, this is the city of. You might even have to put up a picture or maybe a video of the mayor and say like, cause like, you know, in social media land, you can doctor things really easily, right? Uh, we said, we've all probably experienced that. So that kind of adds some veracity to it. That like, this is from the city. This is not made up. This is not a robot. This is really from us. You can trust it. So that's the biggest thing. You gotta build trust in that your own page is the right place. Then the last piece to this, and again, I'm not a social media wizard by any means, but the biggest thing that those communications people will tell you is that, and you have to either yourselves, but also from the community build champions. And so then they combat those people on, without you even having to lift a finger. That they'll go onto those pages and say, no, 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 that's, that's malarkey. The city said this, here's this, then they'll link it for you. You know, these are your town champions out there. They'll say, no, no, no. Here's what the city said. Here's the link to that thing. That's the truth. So that's where you wanna work with those residents who are your supporters, who will set the record straight without even you having to engage. That's the dream scenario. You gotta build up sort of a network of your own supporters, so to speak, that will help deal with the online back and forth. So I, none of it's easy. None of it's easy, but that's what I would say. Like first start internally and make sure your stuff is the best, always. Then build from there. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Great. So the other piece to that, again, if you're wanting to post about city stuff on your own time and time, there's nothing that says you can't do that for everyone, elected officials and staff. But always be mindful that if you make a mistake, like especially, cause people, especially elected officials, if, if you make some kind of mistake, if you're gonna say, oh, the council meeting tonight, blah, blah, blah happened, right? I see people do that. Like, like you better be right too. Okay? Cause then you're gonna, if you're wrong in some way, in how you represent, how the council meeting went down or this discussion happened or something or other, and you're wrong, not only does that hurt your um, your own credibility publicly, it also hurts the city, right? Cause people are gonna believe you. They're not gonna make a, you know, a difference in their own minds of, oh, this is not the city page, he's just spouting off or she's just spouting off. They're not gonna make that distinction in their own minds. They're just gonna say, oh, that's what the council member said. It must be true, right? So it's double damaging when a council member or a staff member posts some inaccurate information or makes some negative comments that don't really have a substance to it. So just keep that in mind. That's, I know it's tough. This day and age, everyone goes right to social media whenever they got any thoughts or feelings for the world. But just when it's everything related, anything related to the city, A, don't represent the city unless you've been given permission to, like in a formal sense. And then B, be accurate and be professional, okay? Hopefully there's no issues with that, but now, like I said before, this, this particular bullet point, we've had beef up uh, over the last several years. Um, this with the explosion of social media and all the fun that goes into it. Other questions on that or anything else? Okay. You guys are kind of quiet, so I'll start calling you out here in a minute. All right, we'll flip over to the other side for council meetings. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on the basics here cause you guys got a great staff and you probably know what you're doing when it comes to just following the basics of the open meetings law. Um, just, you know, I think you guys know this, but be mindful that there is a law and you need to always be, you always adhere to it. Uh, with council members, the biggest issue by far and away, we just talked about social media, but having impromptu gatherings, meetings, whatever you wanna call it, that would be in violation of the open meetings law. The, the old classic example that I've literally seen with my own eyes is a council meeting ends and three or four or more of members of the council go down to the local tab and have the second meeting, right? Clear violation of the open meetings law, if you're talking about city business as a quorum, as a group outside an official meeting. Everybody understands that, right? And so it's, again, it's easy to do those things nowadays. Now with social media and text messages and emails and every other way of communicating with each other has got even more problematic. The biggest issue these days with the kind of the walking quorum or the illegal gatherings outside of the meeting is, anyone wanna guess? Group emails. That is the hardest one right now because it makes sense. A lot of people wanna do creepy emails, city staff included. They'll say um, to the mayor and council, they have like a group email saying, just an information. Hey, be aware that this thing happened last night in this part of town. We'll talk about it at the next council meeting. But then all it takes is one council member to respond and say, I'm not in favor of that. Boom. You just triggered an illegal meeting. Because you basically indicated how you were gonna vote. You deliberated on city business outside of the council meeting with a quorum present. I know this sounds weird to say quorum present, but in email, you're all there, right? You're all communicating basically about city business outside of a council meeting. So the, the real rule on that stuff is you can share information with each other. That's, it's gotta stop right there though. The biggest thing that you'll see, even see city staff these days put at the end of their emails to council saying, do not reply all. Do not reply all. This is informational only. Read it. Do not reply. If you need to talk to Chelsea, if you need to talk to the city attorney, let me know. We can set up a meeting or something like that, right? That's the biggest thing that triggers it these days. Um, is those replies and the group text threads and things like that. It's understandable why people use it, why cities use that, but you gotta be careful um, with that particular part of the open meetings law. Uh, otherwise it's all kind of the basic things of making sure there's 24 hours notice before every meeting. Um, and you guys meet on Mondays regularly, is that right? So the thread meeting come out, notice was on Friday. I got that. I was like, that's perfect. Exactly what you want. Um, behind all that, there's a process the staff works with, making sure you get all your materials in and the pack that goes out to you all and you get the agenda posted in due time. Uh, so it looks like you guys got a good process, just kind of keep everything moving every time you have a meeting. Um, and, and so that's, that's fine. You got, but 24 hours is the minimum notice before any type of meeting, regular meetings, special meeting, work sessions, you name it. Um, you can have many, as many meetings as you like. There's absolutely zero limitations in the state code on how many times you meet as a city council. Um, no one would run for office if you met more than you probably meet already. But um, you can meet as often as you'd like, as long as you provide notice and follow all the rest of the open meetings laws. You can use closed sessions as well, uh, for very specific reasons. There are just a handful that cities really, councils really use closed sessions for. Those also apply though to your boards and commissions. All those, all these laws apply to your city-appointed boards and commissions as well. Okay? This is sometimes a misunderstood part of the open meetings law that library boards and the park boards all have to follow this stuff too. They can also use closed sessions for those specific reasons if it's justified. Um, so all of it applies equally um, to the governmental bodies as defined by the state code. So again, city council is your primary example. Every city has one. But city-appointed boards like park and library and that type, those types, they also fall under the law as well, okay? Um, any questions on the law? Any confusion there? No walking quorums? That's good. Stay out of the Iowa Public Information Board's agenda. That's kind of what I, that's always a good idea. All right. So the last piece of this is uh, procedures and best practices that really help make sure that you guys are having good, effective meetings. And um, I mean, you got a beautiful facility here. First of all, I should congratulate yourselves on this. This is an amazing place. And so the reason I bring that up is it's really conducive to having good public meetings. Uh, so I applaud you all for making this investment. Um, now, as great as this facility is, you can have bad meetings in a, in a great facility. And you can have good meetings in a bad facility. And so you still have to have really good rules and a really good culture to making sure your meetings are productive and healthy. Um, you know, you're, you're gonna have contentious issues, right? It's not always gonna be five O votes. It's not always gonna be clean and easy and you're out of here in a half hour. Ideally you are, but you're gonna have some long nights. You're gonna have some struggles. And just accept that that's part of the deal. Um, but when those things happen and when stuff gets hot and heavy, you need rules in place to help keep things on track. Um, the worst examples I can think of is cities that do not have adequate rules. And then secondly, cities that do not enforce their rules. Because you could have the best set of rules and Chelsea shared, you're, and you guys have great rules. But if they're not enforced equally and consistently and timely, they're worthless. They're absolutely worthless. Uh, and so the meetings that I've seen that are like the worst of, the worst of the worst, um, it's typically that. It's either they don't have any rules to fall back on. They have no good way of getting people reined back in, including council members. Um, and/or uh, the mayor and the rest of the team is not willing to enforce them. And so then things slip off into a place you don't really wanna go. So you have good rules, just make sure you're aware of them. I cannot stress how basic but important that is for an elected officials, like, cause these are your meetings, okay? The old kind of line about how city government and city council meetings work in Iowa is that they are meetings that are open to the public, but they are not public meetings. What do I mean by that? These are business meetings. They are designed in Iowa anyways, to be business meetings, to, to conduct the business of the public, of the city. This is sometimes for especially newer council members, they don't quite understand what I mean by that. And sometimes they have a picture in their mind of council meetings being like town hall forums. They see it on the movies or something like that and everyone can say whatever they want, whenever they want, right? Um, especially in New England, that's kind of the traditional format, these town hall. Everyone can just, in, you know, public and council included, they can just say whatever they want, whenever they want. We don't really have that here in Iowa. Um, there's nothing to say you couldn't have that, cause you can set up your own rules as you like as a city council. But really no one, no one uses a town hall format um, that I'm aware of uh, at the city level here in Iowa. We have what I would call our business meetings. They are, they are really meant to do the business of the city. Um, and they're open to the public, but there's not really a, a guarantee for the public to participate except for one example, which is what? Anyone?
Public hearings.
What's that?
Public hearings.
Thank you, city clerk. Public hearings. That's the only time the public has a legal right to address you all. A legal right under state code of Iowa to address you all, okay? Any other public comments beyond that are up to you. And you need to have rules for those, all right? So pretty much every city allows public comments. And we strongly encourage that you should have a way to your public to come before you as public officials and, and share their thoughts and, and their criticisms and whatever they wanna say. Um, but within reason, within a structure of the rules. So what is most common, I think you guys addressed this in some fashion, that you have a public comment agenda item. And I would say typically it's best to do that at the beginning of the meeting, okay? Uh, why? If someone's here to address the public or the council, they're here probably because they're not happy with something. And making them stay longer into the evening and later in the agenda, they get typically more and more worked up and stir crazy and emotional. And so if they're there for that, for those reasons already, just let them have their peace early on and we can move on, do the agenda, do the business after that. It's up to you all, of course, but most cities would do that at the beginning. Um, and allow people to say whatever they want. They also typically limit those comments to three minutes. And also it has to be germane. Remarks have to be germane. What does that mean? It has to be something about the city government. Don't get up here and talk about school issues. Um, or the Hawkeyes and the Kansas City Chiefs. I don't know, whatever, like stuff that somebody could in theory start talking about. You're kind of like, no, this is the city government. We're not gonna up here and talk about sports, okay? So have, but you gotta have a rule because then they'll say what? If you don't, if you say, ah, it's not for us, like, what, what do you mean? Like, no, we have rules here. And in fact, what some cities do is could take a condensed version of the rules and put it up here on this podium. So this member of the public can say, see that, oh, okay, I've gotta keep my time, you know, keep my comments limited and I gotta get to the point, right? That's what you want. You wanna get them to the point. It's not to say we don't wanna hear you, but we wanna make sure we get to the point. We got a lot of other business to talk about and, and deal with. And, and so we gotta keep things moving. Um, so that's a big piece of this, which is again, it's really hard for some folks to grasp. Um, so that's a big piece of this, which is again, it's really hard for some folks to grasp. Because you want to be, you want to serve your public. You want to have a good relationship with them. You want to show them that you care, right? And how better to do that by letting them come in and share their thoughts and wisdom? But you have to do it within the structure of a business meeting. Cannot stress how important that is for a good, productive, effective council meeting. Um, you got to build that sort of into your just typical routines and processes. A for you all, but B for the public too, so they understand this is how these meetings are done. So that kind of falls into the, the things that your rules should, we always tell cities they should at least address. I know you guys do. The one of the biggest kind of points of contention is how the agenda is set. And I forget, I should have looked this up. Do you have a rule to this effect, you know?
Yes, we do.
Okay, how's, how's that work?
Um, so staff sets the agenda. If the council wants, um, if a council member wants something on the agenda. They can run it by the mayor and the mayor will kind of poll the other council members to see if it's something they want to talk about. Or um, you can bring it up at a council meeting.
For like the next meeting to be considered?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. That's good. That's loose enough to allow you all some flexibility if something pops in your mind. In the middle of a meeting that you hadn't thought of before, um, also working with the staff and and the mayor, that's good. The ones I have the hardest time with are, um, it's kind of antiquated nowadays, but you still see some cities that have rules that say only the mayor can. Add or remove items from the agenda. Well, that, so the mayor can't vote, but that in those cities, the mayor has a lot of power, right? Because if the council comes to them and keeps on coming to them and says, I really want this agenda item on there, the mayor says, not interested. What do you do? And that's really tough. There are ways to work around that um, as a council, but. Um, for those cities, that can be a really kind of strict way of doing things and it's tough if the mayor is not willing to. Even listen to their own council or the public for that matter. Uh, so you have a good system with that, but it is important to understand that process. Because again, when you talk to your public out there and you want to really be like responsive and yeah, we're gonna do this, but. Well, if that agenda item is too soon to put on the meeting, you gotta respect that too, right? So you gotta go back to that citizen and say, hey. Not this next meeting, but probably next month, we'll have the council talk about it. Alright, that's fair. Right? So that's how you gotta know how to respond to those kind of questions and comments from your public and how that all works. Then we have discussions. So council discussion is a little bit different from city to city. But you need to have some kind of rule in place for a couple of reasons. One is, so not one person's not able to dominate the conversation. That's the easily the biggest problem I see. Um, when you don't have a firm rule on the mayor being able to say, okay, you've had your three minutes or five minutes, Mr. Or Mrs. Council member. Um, you know, does anybody else want to add in? And so you don't have to be like parliamentary, you know, like, you know, I recognize. The ward four council member and all that stuff. Yeah, I'll give you, I'll grant you four minutes or something like, not saying that. But just have a system, a rule that says, okay, someone's kind of going on and on and on and the next item, they're going on and on and on. The next item, they're going on and on and on. And it's the same council member. The mayor needs the ability to say. Let's let somebody else start this next one off, right? Where you've had three minutes. Um, I'm gonna stop you for a second and see if anybody else wants to chime in from the council, right? Make sure that everyone has a chance. That's really the point here is that everyone who wants to speak on an issue. Has a fair and equal chance to to give their thoughts and ask questions or whatever the case may be. So I hope you have a system like that or a rule like that in place that allows you to be balanced. If you don't, I would strongly encourage you to consider that. Um, just in, in the, in the, in the, in the chance that you do get a council member that just really starts to dominate each discussion item. And other council members feel like I can't even get a word in edgewise, right? The second the mayor introduces the item, that person jumps right in every single time. It's not fair, you know, and it isn't fair if that's the case. So if you're dealing with that, I would look at your rules and say, how do we find, figure out a way to keep this more fair? I've seen cities will um, rotate it. Even if one of the council members is um, in the rotation up first, doesn't want to speak, the mayor still goes to them and say, council member A. You're up first to speak. Do you pass? Yes. B, C, D, E, right? So that way there's like, that's, that way it's just a built-in system that's rotated every single item. And they do the roll call vote. You rotate your roll call votes. So you don't have the same person bat and lead off every single time. So the same thought. That this is a way to make sure that we're not letting the same person dominate or the two, you know, two people dominate conversation for every single item. Any thoughts there? Questions? Okay. Um, so next is public comments. Already kind of touched on this. Um, again, the only time you must allow public comments is public hearings. I know you guys have an agenda item for that and and so that's good. Um, the other example that I see sometimes is cities that allow public comments throughout the meeting, which you can do. Um, that's an option that you have. It's not common. It's in fact, pretty rare. It's not something that we encourage. Mainly because I think it it can lead to dysfunctional meetings frankly, that um. You know, it starts to be get to a point where like, well, who's on the council and who's not? Somebody's just constantly chiming in on different issues. And again, don't forget, this is a business meeting of the city government, the city council. And so if the members of the public respectfully are butting in constantly, it gets to be lopsided. You know, you represent them. You, this is the city council. You represent them. And so part of doing your homework is talking to them. If you're hearing a ground swell of support or opposition to this or that issue, you represent them. You can share those thoughts. And concerns as a council member. They don't have to all stand up and speak for every single agenda item. Again, it's your choice to make if that's what you want. Um, but I would have that installed as a rule that you all approve. If you want to have the system where each agenda item, the public's allowed to speak. Um, it's up to you all, but in just my experience, not many cities do that. Why? Because it leads to dysfunction. You're gonna eventually have a meeting where it's just, you're here all night and you're probably not gonna feel like much got done. Um, so again, it's up to you all. I don't know how you feel about it. I know that that's allowed today in your rules. I should take, again, taking a closer look at that. Um, do you allow comments throughout?
Uh, no, um, if you read our rules and procedures, it's during public comment or during the public hearing.
Okay. Oh, that's it. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. So that's the most common system that I see when it comes to just public comments. Um, and so I don't know if there are any questions on that particular part of public comments from anyone? Now's your chance.
I think one of the things that we sometimes struggle with is sometimes they want to ask clarifying questions.
Sure.
And so how do you get them the information without again, starting to go down a path of free flowing conversation where they're taking over?
Yeah, that's a great question and I don't know if I have a great solution to it without it opening up. Because all, here's the, as you guys probably know, in city government, once you open it up for one citizen, whatever it is, you've kind of set a precedent. And everybody else now has that same opportunity. And so again, it's not to say it's the worst idea. Um, but once, you know, one resident gets that chance, now you gotta be open to that for everybody else. So I would say the best way to go about that is actually doing homework ahead of time as council, which I not want to give you more stuff to do in your free time. But try to work with your members of your public, using social media even, and ask, hey, on the next agenda. Especially when you know you've got some hot button issue items, because let's be honest, like ninety percent of your agenda items are non-controversial. No one really cares about. They're just routine business of the city government and no one really thinks much about it. But there's always that other ten percent. And so those are the ones I would say, look, at the next council meeting, we're gonna consider this or we're gonna discuss this. If you have any thoughts or comments or concerns. Please share them with me before so I can represent you at the next council meeting. That's how I would handle it personally. That's what I would encourage. I don't know if it's the best thing to open up the comments, like the point of clarification um. On the spot, just because once you, again, once you do that, you're gonna have to make that part of your normal process. It's up to you all if that's what you want to do. And maybe that's the rule. Maybe that's the workaround for you to consider that. It's not to give you a chance to comment as a member of the public, but if you have a point of clarification, you can ask within a lot of time by the mayor. Again, I'm a little, I'm a little nervous about endorsing that, just from my own personal experience, because well, again, once you open up that door, it's kind of like Pandora's box. You, that's the most dysfunctional meetings I've seen by far and away are the council meetings where. The public can just shout out things throughout the meeting. It's very not fun.
I've had some success in the past about directing those folks to work with staff.
Yeah.
I mean, most of the questions that the public asks, quite frankly, in, in the meeting are questions they could have called city hall.
Yeah, yes.
They, they can get those answers through me or my office or Chelsea, right? Um, and it's more of that they just don't know. So I know that we've directed the public to, you know what? Follow up with staff. They can answer all these questions. They, we, we did it specifically a couple of years ago. We had a member of the public that really asked a lot of questions specifically about finite budget items.
Yeah.
I know Chelsea met with that particular member of the public and that was very successful. They felt heard and all those kinds of things. So without opening up the proverbial can of worms.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that's what you just said there is part of this deal. You want, they want to be heard. They want to know that. That you are representing them and they're listening to. So that I, it's not, I don't want you to ever miss. You know, misinterpret my guidance here because that is a big part of your job. And I'm also trying to protect you all frankly. From having really long and dysfunctional meetings. And so it's, it, it's, it's tough. It's very tough to balance these things out. So maybe that, maybe have a comment box, a call, a question box and just say, if you have questions, just submit this real quick. We'll, we'll have our staff look at it and re-respond or that will share with the council and they can think about it and talk about it at the next meeting. I mean, I would try to devise a system that keeps you on track while still acknowledging that, you know, you matter as a public. Your thoughts, your questions, your concerns still matter. Um, like, we want to hear from you, but we have business to do. And that's kind of the point here is you've got to get your business done as a city. So.
Mickey, if I may, just real quick. So again, ten months new into this. I think the, um, one of the things that I've seen quite often in ten months is someone will come up and have a public comment, right? For something that's on the agenda.
Yeah.
And then staff or whoever's presenting will come up and provide new information, right? That the resident or whoever didn't know and they want to ask that question and get, you know. They have a new question because it's new information.
Yeah.
So if it's new to us, it's new to them. I mean, how do you handle that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that's, let's be honest, like, citizens aren't gonna read council packets. They're not gonna know everything.
But admittedly, I, I think the examples I'm thinking of in my head, it was information that was not in a council packet. It surfaced new through organic conversation.
Okay.
It's procedural, like what's the next step?
Okay, gotcha.
I mean, some people might just want clarification.
Yeah, and I think it's, again, this is really difficult to balance because if it's. I think, well, a lot of the questions are gonna be simple and like you probably answer within thirty seconds right here on the spot. My fear is then that just turns into this system where people can just ask questions whenever they want. That's like, they, they see one of their friends and neighbors out there doing it, well, that, you know, now I can do it. And you guys know your talent and your council meetings better than I do, certainly. So it's one of those deals, if you have a lot of people attending your meetings and asking questions. Then maybe not allowing just a freewheeling thing is the best idea. It's probably not. But if you only have a couple of people here, maybe it is able, you're better able to just handle them as they come in. I just, you know, I would, I would want there to be a, a system in place, a rule in place that they have to follow to make sure that that's. Keeping things orderly. That's, that's part of the big deal is you want to keep it orderly and avoid just the back and forth. Cause it's, it's innocent, it might seem at the start, right? As soon as you open up a Q and A type of system, all it takes is that town agitator, everyone's got one or two. And their questions may not be very fun to answer, right? They might not be very just clerical where they're seeking clarification. They might be trying to antagonize you and now you've got a problem on your hands. So that's, you know, it, not to say that their voice doesn't matter, you know, it's just, it's not very productive. And now you've got a whole issue like, well, how are we gonna respond to this? Because they're just throwing everything at the wall and that's not good either. So it's tough because, yeah, your citizen that comes to the meeting, they're not gonna know that the engineer's report is gonna cover their item. And maybe bring up new information and now they've got new questions to ask because what's going on on the main street project and then. Engineer said this, but now I'm kind of like, well, what about that project, you know? It's only natural that that's gonna happen. And so it's, again, it's up to you all. If you want to have a way to get the, allow for questions to be asked. It's up to you, like, I, and I don't frankly, I haven't seen a city come up with a system that says you can only ask. Points of clarification, but you can't ask policy questions. That's probably gonna get lost on citizens. Like, what do you mean by that? And as, you know, you've already lost, you know, the, the intent. Um, I would just say either, either allow it or don't. That's gonna be your, your choice to make. And if you do allow it, I would probably limit it to like one minute, even less time. Um, this is just because again, if, once you open this thing up. Lot of them are just gonna be simple questions from, I, what'd you mean, what, what did you mean by that? What did that report actually mean? But then you're gonna get one out of ten is gonna be that person who really wants to just get into it with you guys. Which is again, that's fine, but is that really what you want at your council meetings? Most council members would say no, you know, we don't, this is not a time to grandstand and poli- and do politics. We're doing business.
Sometimes, you know, the, the mayor who chairs the meetings will say, I'd be happy to have someone. Um, get back to you after the meeting and we do have a good council that'll stick around, you know, and.
Yeah.
Talk to citizens after the meeting and maybe address some of their concerns and questions. So that does happen often.
Right, right. So yeah, I think it's, it's, it's in part rules, it's in part culture. In the sense that you need rules in place like you have, but you also need a culture that says like, we can, I can still ask after a fact and get my answers. My question's answered. Um, now, all that being said, I get the point that if you want, especially you guys are recording your meetings, that like the public that's not here. Here's the answer to my question, right? Cause it helps the whole public hear this response. So I can see the reasoning behind that, but again, I just worry that it goes off into an area. Most councils don't want to go in, in, in having disruptive meetings. So. I don't know, it's up to you. If you really are adamant about having this, it's, it's your call to make. You know, it's all of you on the council have a decision to make on this. What I would tell you then is have a rule within your rules that says something that, okay, you can ask for a point of clerical clarification. It's gotta be germane. Um, to the item that's being discussed right now and it can only be for clarification. It can't be to get into a policy debate. Right? The council debates, not the public, right? If you want to debate, you should run for council. Um, otherwise, wait till after the meeting. We can talk more about it. Talk to your representatives on the council. Um, when we're done here with our business. Which I realize I didn't give you a strong thing, but I would say again, if you want to get down that road, add it to your rules, but be very specific on when and how it's allowed. It's good thoughts. These, and these are common struggles, trust me. I've been to council meetings all across the state, big cities, small towns. And actually the smaller communities have it harder than you guys do. Um, because not only is it just, it's smaller than this, but they tend to all know each other. Um, there are a lot of family relationships and so it's. Uh, you get the personal stuff that gets injected into it and you're like, okay, I need to do my thing and get out of here. Where were we? So decorum and behavior is part of all this. So getting back to this issue with comments and, and so on from the public. Um, decorum is absolutely neat, necessary. And I think you all understand that, but it doesn't take much for you to lose that in a meeting and then suddenly your meetings become. Um, really nasty and unproductive. And so usually that starts with the council itself, to be honest with you. I hate to say that, but usually it's the council itself that is leading the negativity. And leading the disruption and leading the bad behavior. And so it starts with you all in terms of setting the right. Uh, decorum and the right vibe in the room. Anytime you have a council meeting, so be respectful, be professional with each other. And how you present yourself to the public, even when you have a contentious item that you're not in agreement on, still be civis, civil with one another. Um, that's always the place to start. Uh, now, if you do have a member of the public or council or staff, they're acting out and being disruptive or not following the rules. It comes down to the mayor, um, enforcing those rules, but um, you know, I would never condone poor behavior. And not even in the slightest. Once you go down that path again, it's just, it's hard to rein it back in and get people to start following the rules again. And so you just never allow interruptions, never allow name calling, never allow any of that stuff, period. Um, it started, it starts with the mayor, but the mayor's gonna need support, you know? Um, mayors are elected too and they don't want to, that's the hardest part about being an elected official is trying to tell people no. That you're wrong or that you, this is unacceptable behavior. Um, so, but you gotta do it. Uh, so that's a big part of it. Um, but you know, you've got staff here. Sometimes the city attorneys are present, is present as well. And sometimes you have a point of order. You gotta get a rule, a, a rule on the rule and you go to the attorney sometimes and say, what's, what's? And you go to the attorney sometimes and say, what's, what's the rule on this? And then you get some help. But it really starts with you all. Alright, so lastly, here's some best practices. Um, going back to the front page, really understand your roles. Your limits and your powers as elected officials and staff, that's just really important to, to be a good partner to, to you, everyone on the council and on the staff here. Know these rules and know what's limited on public comments and discussion, the order of business, all that stuff. It's boring, but it's really important, um, to know exactly how it's supposed to work. And then especially for you on the council, that remember the public is upset, well, why couldn't I just sit, stand up and talk? Well, this is why, you know, we've got rules here that we gotta follow. So next meeting, come in, do your public comments, right? So that's just basic stuff, but, um, you as a council, they're gonna look to you as the leaders. So you gotta know it. Uh, do your homework. This is easily the biggest thing that I think new council members struggle with beyond some of the other stuff we talked about, just understanding their roles, but just finding time to do your job. Which is largely, other than working with the public, reading the council packet. You've got to do your homework. It's very difficult. I don't even, how big are your council packets typically, would you say?
Sometimes a few hundred pages.
Yes. So it is probably not a, a, um, an expectation that you read it page for page. But at least know what's in there, especially again, those kind of hot button issues where you're gonna be expected to have some good debate about um, and ask questions on. Do that on your own time over the weekend. Ask questions, especially technical questions of Chelsea and the staff ahead of time, if at all possible and when at all possible. Lot of those questions that come up during council meetings can be easily answered prior to the meeting and you're good to go. I know Chelsea has probably experienced this, um, but, uh, sometimes a council member sadly, um, didn't find time to read their packet. They get to a council meeting and they start asking a million questions. And eventually the mayor or fellow council member says, it's in your packet. You know, it's kind of a running joke in city government. It's in the packet. And it's, it's kind of a frustration if it keeps on happening because it's like, hey, you're wasting all of our time. You're in the public's time. If you had just read the darn packet. Uh, and so work with staff. I cannot stress how important it is to work with your staff on all of these things. You can't expect it to be know, to know everything that's going on in your town. As much as you probably try, uh, cause you wanna represent your public and, and work with them and serve them well. There's too much, right? Couple hundred pages or so. That is too much for any one person to read every single time. So talk to Chelsea, talk to your staff. What's going on? What's, what's the big stuff that's happening that I really need to hone in on, right? And ask those questions ahead of time. You know, use, use your good communication skills to prepare for the next meeting. It's an ongoing process, right? It's always going. Yeah, there's never, there's never really a break when you're an elected official or a city official of any type. And that kind of goes with one of my points here, just relying on the staff. Like, that's what you pay them to do. You know, they serve at your pleasure. You give them direction. Uh, but part of it is also soliciting their input as the professionals that know this stuff better than anyone out there. They know your town better than anyone other than yourselves. So rely on them. If you have some big development project happening or a public infrastructure project, typically the, the engineers and the developers and the staff and the architects, all those folks are gonna go out and do some research, right? They're gonna come up, we could do it this way, we could do it that way. And they come to you with some options. So that's, 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 that, rely on them. Tell them, I want, give me, you know, three, three different choices. Okay. They'll come back to you with some three really good choices. They might even say, here's the best one, staff, staff input, here's the number one choice, right? It's up to you to make the decision, but our professional expertise would say this is the best choice. Okay, here we go, right? So rely on them, um, communicate with them. Uh, also be professional at all times. I said this before. The cities that I work with where I am brought in to deal with some problems, is usually, again, it comes, starts with the council. They're being disrespect, respectful with one another, um, or to staff. And they're setting a bad example frankly, as leaders of the community. Cause you guys are leaders. You were elected to lead this community whether you like it or not. And the good times, the bad times and everything else in between. Um, and so even when things get testy and, and there's a tricky issue happening, you still gotta be professional and be civil. Um, be supportive of the city as a whole. Remember I said before, if you lose out on a vote, don't have to mean you like it. Don't have to mean you're in agreement with the outcome, but remember that you serve the city as a whole, alright? Even for the folks that didn't vote for you, you still serve them. And so you gotta move on. You gotta be professional and still be a, a good positive influence and leader of your community. Said this before as well, I cannot stress it enough, but don't make promises you can't keep or that your, that your city can't keep. And so you're gonna get requests from everyone all the time. Why does the city do this? Why doesn't the city do that? You know, it's no, I, why is my street the last one to get plowed in the wintertime? That's always my favorite. Uh, cause everyone's, everyone's street is the last one to get plowed, right? That's, if you listen to some residents, um, which is obviously can't happen, but that's how they think, some folks do. And so, you know, okay, yep, I'll look into that. I'll see what our plan is, our snow power removal, our snow removal plan is. I'll come back to you with some information. And, and that's all you can say. But don't promise, say, oh yeah, I'll go tell the public works director that your street is first from now on. That's not very wise. As much as you wanted to say, especially if it's your street too. And this one, I, you know, is always important to remember this, but, um, kind of alluded to this before about serving in local government right now. It's probably never been harder, at least in my twenty odd years of doing this kind of type of work. Um, it's, it's, it's tough out there. Um, for a lot of reasons, social media is one of them. But it's, it's tough out there. So try to remember that this is serving the public. You are giving back to your community by doing what you do. Both on elected and staff side of this. Um, you don't get a lot of pats on the back. I, I think I got one in, uh, the seven, eight years I worked in city government. For the silliest of things too. Uh, you're not gonna get a lot of that. You're not gonna get a lot of out of boys and out of girls. Uh, you are gonna get a lot of critical comments and complaints. Uh, and that's just part of it. A lot of times it's not personal. Try not to take it personally. And just remember that this is serving the public, that someone's gotta do it. Your town needs you. And so, um, you all have different viewpoints and different priorities, but you are a team working together to improve Polk City. Um, so even if you don't get those, um, the applause and, and the thank yous, that it is, it is a thankless job, but it is very, very important to this community. So you, you go through a tough meeting, you go through a tough conversation with somebody, just remember, take a deep breath. And remember that most of the town loves you and supports you. They just don't say it as much as probably they should. Uh, but they do support. Most residents love their city and they, they do value the services that you provide. Um, and so try to get through those tough times and remember that. So questions, comments? Everything's going well. Anything at all, seriously. Not even related to this sheet, anything that's going on in Polk City while you got me for another twenty-two minutes.
It's a good presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Anybody?
Staff included? I know you guys have questions. Come on. Okay.
They're all looking down.
Alright, well, thanks again. I do appreciate it. It's a, it's also an easy one for me since it's local. And so that was nice, but, um, it's good to come up here and see this. Your town is really thriving. So again, there's always gonna be some criticism out there, but this is, this is seen as a great community in our Des Moines metro area. So keep it up, keep working hard, keep representing the public, try to survive tomorrow. And everything that comes with our election cycle and season, it's, god, it's crazy. Um, but and again, keep working hard. Appreciate it. If anything does come up, let me know. I'm always happy to help.
So we're gonna ask for a motion and, and a second to adjourn, please.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Again, thank you.